June 3, 2021, it is 4:00 PM. I would like to remind the members of the board to be sure and turn on their microphones and make sure that they're speaking into them when they speak because we are being recorded. So I will ask each member in attendance to please introduce themselves. Jeremy Hooper and Philip Shoemaker are absent tonight with an excused absence. We start with Paul.
Sorry, say again.
Just introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you. I can do that. That's easy. Requires no preparation. Paul Roberts.
Jack Farrell.
Jules Latham.
Matt Jones.
Thank you. See, this is a good way to turn on your microphone, make sure it's working. So we have three, six members, seven members present tonight. We have a quorum and are able to conduct business. Alex Cameron is serving as staff to the board tonight, and we will follow the order of the agenda. So the first item is the approval of minutes. There was no meeting on May 6. That meeting was canceled, so we will be looking at the meeting minutes for the April meetings. For the April 8 regular meeting, are there any questions or corrections to the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
So we have a motion by Matt Jones and a second by Jack Farrell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. For the April 21 special meeting, are there any questions or corrections to those minutes? Has everyone read the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
We have a motion by David. Do we have a second? Second by Jules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is general business, where we will discuss the upcoming proposed amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, otherwise known as the PDO. So I will turn the floor over to Alex and Darren.
All right, and thank you. Cindy mentioned, I am the principal staff liaison for Planning and Zoning Board, but I am, as always, supported by Darren here, and even more so especially relative to these two topics we're going to discuss tonight by Kathy Lyles, who I will turn it over to in just a second. So what we're discussing with you guys here today, because we were not quite to a point of wanting to go to a public hearing for these two type of amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance for a couple of reasons. One, even though we have shared the electronic permitting with you guys before, we wanted to give one more final look, as we had taken some of that feedback and staff had met once again with Kathy to go over maybe a couple little tweaks, and I'm sure Kathy will attest to this. With both of these amendments, we can continuously tweak and re-tweak and refine, and eventually we're just going to have to put it out to a public hearing. So this is hopefully going to be a final review for feedback from this board on the electronic permitting before we get ready to go to a call for a public hearing, which, again, would not be anytime before the July regular scheduled meeting. Also, for the 160D, of course, you know, we've been talking a lot about 160D now for about a year and a half, and there's been a delayed effective date for this, of July 1 of this year because of COVID restrictions and a lot of local municipalities and governments, you know, being impacted a lot more severely than we have been able to be impacted. We've been able to leverage our technology, and even though at sometimes a burden of our IT group, you know, we've been able to conduct business accordingly. We haven't really missed much of a beat. However, it is much more beneficial to have public hearings and broader discussions as we're able to meet now. The 160D, again, those amendments are really going to be to bring us into compliance with the new general statutes for planning and land development regulation. Again, for back history on this, this is a consolidation of both the city and county enabling legislation. It's been a comprehensive update that's been in the mix for years. A lot of these are just small tweaks and referencing the correct general statute within the development ordinance, updating some definitions that things are better defined now. So that's one big thing that 160D has helped local governments in the state of North Carolina. And as Darren can hold up here is just a visual. Here is basically the entire PDO. Hence, a lot of the reason why you guys don't have that in front of you today to try to digest. I told Cindy before the meeting, if we hit this with you guys before the meeting, it would literally probably knock you down. So what we're working to do after Kathy was going to give a brief presentation on that this evening, is we're going to pull out all the applicable excerpts from the PDO to weaken forward to you guys. We're going to also work on preparing an index of sort, so almost like a list of what's going to be changed, and that's also going to help us greatly when we go to advertise for this public hearing, because, you know, just amending the PDO to comply with Chapter 160D doesn't quite cut it. But there again, citing each section and verse of the PDO that it would apply to would be quite lengthy. One other thing we're going to discuss is, you know, other than just the required sections and amendments that we need to do, there's also some options that we have that we can, you know, get into a greater discussion with and feedback from the board and maybe what kind of tweaks staff can do. So this has been a long time in the making when we haven't been bearing down on Kathy for other amendments like buffer ordinance that you guys may remember a little bit about, and other just general planning duties that we've really needed her help, and she stepped in greatly in the interim. She's been helping a lot with our Historic Preservation Commission and getting that type of work done and completed for us. So now it's time to put this to rest. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Thank you, Alex. So what's really funny is that this discussion Alex has just had with you is probably going to be the longest part of this meeting, because even though these code amendments look rather substantial, when I show you the list, you're going to see it's not quite as bad as it seems. So, I mean, as Alex has already mentioned, we're talking about consolidating the city and county planning statutes into one document, whereas in the past it's been two separate statutes. They've brought some logical coherent organization to the statute, which would actually help the PDO a little bit when it's time to do your full rewrite, I suspect. And definitely the clarifying amendments and reforms are very helpful. And the one thing I would say is that regardless of how you approach the amendments to the PDO, the statute always stands. The statute always controls. And so if there's something that's not in the PDO but is in the statute, you still have it to fall back on. That doesn't go away. So I'd just like to mention that. So as we've discussed, it actually, 160D is already effective, and then local governments were directed to work on their amendments by July 1. And so 160A for those local governments that are still in this time period remains in force until you amend your regulations or July 1, whichever comes first. So in our case, we will be effective in 160D on July 1, even though you won't be fully adopted with your revisions by then, it does become effective. So in essence, it will control at that point. So and the reason you really want to make these changes, you want to avoid confusion. Some of the standards in here will trump a few local standards, and if you fail to follow the processes in here, you can definitely have some legal issues that could result. And of course, if those legal issues result, you will also be on the hook for paying for them if you made a mistake. So that's why we want to get these revisions in fairly quickly. But the really good news is that a good portion of the PDO was already compliant with 160D. So I would like to say that, because it really, there were a lot of things that were already in there and that were substantially well done, so they didn't necessitate changes. So what does it mean for Pinehurst to consider these changes? So as Alex mentioned, we're going to be taking all the 160A references to 160D. A few will hang around. Annexations, for example, are still parked in 160A, but, you know, most of the references in there will go to 160D references. Probably one you'll find interesting is that although there's always been conflict of interest language for boards, there was not conflict of interest language for staff. Well, now there is. So yes, that will actually go into the zoning code for staff. One of the things that the village does, if you look through your PDO, you have references throughout the PDO to hearings, 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 hearings. You don't say what kind of hearings. You just reference hearings throughout the code, and the process kind of dictates what kind of hearings they are. Are they legislative? Are they quasi-judicial? Are they administrative? But the statute actually directs you to be a little bit more specific. And so while you don't have to make those changes, I am going through and where things are very obviously quasi-judicial, that's what pops up in there, so you know which hearing process you're actually in. vested rights language has changed quite a bit. Some of them are still the same. Building permits are six months, development approvals are a year, but there's now language regarding multi-phase developments. And there is the variable language that allows you on site-specific vesting plans, which is now the new term. Site-specific vesting plans can be approved from two to five years at the discretion of council. So that will be a little bit of a tweak that's going to go in there that you don't have, right? You've got it to some extent, but it makes it plain it can be applied upfront. There is a new addition to variances. When you go to the school of government and you're getting trained on variances, you know, there's always this story about the person that needs a variance to put an elevator in at the beach, and they're like, no, you can't grant a variance for reasons like that. Well, they've now added language that you can grant a variance if there's a disability involved. So that will now get added to that language to address people with disabilities. Another, and we actually talked about this a little bit earlier today, another change is to define standing. Who has standing in a quasi-judicial hearing? And in the past, we've always just presumed any adjoining property owner has standing, maybe some other folks in the community could have standing. So who really, whose testimony really counts at that quasi-judicial hearing? And the interesting thing about standing is that someone has to document that they're significantly impacted. And so it very much clarifies, you know, who is an affected party, who isn't. Doesn't mean that you can't listen to the other folks, but it does mean you shouldn't base your decisions on what they have to say. So there's definitely some more information on that. There is an expedited subdivision review process that is not currently in the subdivision regulations. It's for minor subdivisions that allows for that to move along, I'll just say, more quickly. It doesn't specify that you have to act on it, you know, as soon as somebody walks in the door, but for certain types of minor subdivisions, you can go through an expedited process. Let's see. One of the big changes, and where I think I saw most of the changes in the PDO, was actually in the definitions section. There's statutory definitions, so verbatim from the statute, pretty much straight into the PDO, that's happened. And then the statute also directs you to use definitions that are comparable or compatible or even exact when it comes to looking at other state definitions, particularly for the building code, particularly when you're defining things like dwellings, that type of thing. So I made sure that the language in the definitions was consistent with building code definitions. And then one of the things that looks like it affects the PDO, but maybe not quite so much, is, you know, you're really not supposed to regulate the appearance of single-family dwellings, except of course, in a historic district, you can always do that. But in truth, I think the only place you really regulate the appearance of single-family dwellings is actually in a district that is a historic district. So Alex, refresh my memory. It was village, residential? There we go.
And that's the tradition site just down the hill here.
Mm-hmm. And so that one's really not quite as touchy as I was at first concerned that it might be, but we'll look at that just one more time to make sure we're in good shape on that. The statute is a little bit more broad on types of surety that can be provided as performance guarantees, so we will list those types in there. And I think one of the more significant, and this is actually an addition, you don't have this in your PDO at this time, and that's the approval of development agreements. I think development agreements have been entered into between local governments and a lot of developers at different times in the process. It's very common with conditional zonings, with large mixed-use developments, projects that are going to place heavy demand on resources. And so I guess the legislature has recognized that, okay, we need a mechanism for how these development agreements are going to be adopted. Now Darren will probably tell you it's not his favorite way, because it requires a legislative hearing to adopt a development agreement. So you can't just sit down with the developer, work out your terms, and sign it and go on about your business. You actually have to go through the full legislative process, just like you would a text amendment or a map amendment. On the other side of the coin, you can run that process concurrent with your project review. So there is a way to save a little time by doing it like that. So that's one of the more significant amendments. And then, of course, you can address minor modifications to conditional zoning, to special use permits, but you always have to make sure that how you do those minor modifications is included in the language, does not affect the intensity of use or the type of use. Those things cannot be modified through a minor process. So these items right here are really the summary. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you skip over the historic district guidelines? I may have missed.
Oh, maybe I did. I did skip them. I'm sorry. Okay, so this one's going to be very interesting. So now historic district guidelines are going to become standards. And so if you think about it, if you're going into a special use permit hearing for something that requires a special use permit, I'll just put it that way, you know, we're always making sure that whatever conditions we place on a special use permit are consistent with the standards in the PDO. Well, basically, you're going to have to do that with your historic preservation as well. And it becomes a lot more complicated when your historic district guidelines include words like should and shall. So I think the HPC will be meeting later this month to go back and start to look at some of the revisions they feel like they're going to need to the guidelines, and that's going to have to be brought in as standards. So some of these things may happen a little sequentially while you work through the details. So what are some other things? There is actually a printout with a lot of optional language, but we've spotted a few things that would be kind of helpful to do. There's some subdivision changes in terms of who could approve them and through what process. As an example, I'll talk about some simple things. If a map is exempt under, by statute, exempt is exempt is exempt. Those are frequently reviewed by, at the staff level, they get signed and you move on. So they're usually very quick reviews. Minor subdivisions, same thing, often approved at the staff level and they move on. And yet you'll find other situations where subdivisions may be reviewed through a quasi-judicial process. And if you're exercising judgment in approving a major subdivision, for example, it probably should be done through a quasi-judicial process. If you're following the specific standards of the code, there's no discretion. It's administrative. So even though we have them going through the board for review and through council for review, these are actually more administrative functions than they are legislative or quasi-judicial. So I think going back and looking at these some point in the future would be a good thing to see if there is a potential reassignment of some responsibilities and how these get approved and how they move through the process. And I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just saying these are some things you can consider. Another thing that we could talk about and was actually recommended by our former permit tech would be to clarify application completeness. What has to be submitted before an application is complete? And the reason that's important is a complete application starts the clock. And so you really need to be able to tell people, you haven't submitted this, the clock doesn't start until I get it on the review process. And something I wanted to mention to you, and once again, this is not a requirement of 160D, is I think it would be good to really sit down and look at some of your public hearing requirements, because you trigger public hearings for everything. And some things are really public meetings, not so much public hearings. And so being able to go back and look at those and say, gee, do we have to do the 10-day, 25-day notice for something that is not a text amendment or a rezoning? You know, what can we do to make sure that the public is adequately notified without necessarily making the process overly formal and actually more expensive when you look at having to do some of the mailed notices and things that go out? And so I think there are discussions that can be had about, you know, can you use signage? Can you use website postings? Can you use first-class mail? What, you know, what's the best way to do this? You know, do you have to follow the 10-day, 25-day? But I think in the PDO, everything's been very formalized in terms of deadlines, and that may be because it was easier just to make it all consistent. But in truth, you actually trigger public hearings when you don't have to have them. So I thought it might be kind of helpful to mention that. So these are some of the larger items that I would suggest, considering there's some more minor things. And Alex, what we might want to do, let me ask, have we sent them this list? I'm going to hold it up so if Alex will turn around, I'll show it to him. Remember this list? Yeah, there we go. Yes, the checklist. If you haven't seen the checklist, I think what we probably should do is include the checklist when we send the packet out to you. And the nice thing about the checklist is that it has a lot of may include, may include, may consider. They're not mandatory, but they're things you can think about. So you might spot some things in there that you may want to do and that we can make sure are in the PDO. Most local governments are amending their development ordinances with just a total replacement. And so that's why when you look at the full printout, it's quite large. And so what a lot of places are just doing, they're just wholesale, just replacing the entire code. I'm not sure that we need to do that, and I think as Alex discussed, we'll work with Jill, and we'll be able, I think, to pare it down into a more adoptable format if Jill doesn't throw her computer at me. But I think we can do a list for you that, you know, that we can actually get into the paper that won't take up five pages. We'll work on bringing that to you for the next meeting. So I think that wraps it up very quickly for 160D, unless you have some questions.
Do you have a question? What's site-specific vesting plans? What do they mean by vesting plans? I don't understand that.
Okay, yes. So a site-specific vesting plan, it used to be called a site-specific development plan. So a site-specific vesting plan is just a new phrase for the same thing. And what that constitutes is any type of major development plan. So it could be a preliminary plat, it could be a plan that's submitted with a special use permit, it could be a plan that's submitted with conditional zoning. So anything that's a drawn plan that lays out specifically what is expected to happen on a piece of property. And you'll see when we bring this to you, I actually have included what it is in there, so what they need to submit on it in order to qualify a document as a site-specific plan, vesting plan.
Okay, thanks.
But basically, if they've got that plan and you act on it, say it's a special use permit, you're in that two-year window of being able to just implement that plan. Doesn't matter if the rules change, doesn't matter what happens, you can continue to move forward with that development plan. Now, at the end of two years, say you haven't started. Uh-oh, well, your plan's about to expire. That would normally bring you back in and take you back through the full review process again. So there is an out, and the out would be you can go to council and say, can I get an extension on that plan? And you can get an extension for up to five years by statute. Once you hit the five-year window, that plan's done. Anything's dead in the water, you've got to go back through and treat it like it's a new submittal. But otherwise, you can't, there are ways to get additional time, vesting time. And you can see where that could be important, because when you think about it, if you approve a special use permit, and it takes them a year to get their Corps of Engineer permits and their wildlife issues and other things addressed, they've lost half of their development time already. And in the meantime, you're also trying to line up investors. If you're a developer, you're trying to get all your pieces in place, you might not make that two-year window. And so what they don't really want to do is punish someone who's actually been trying to get something done, it's just they don't have it in the ground to show you yet, but they have been steadily working on the project. And the bigger these projects get, you know, the more time they take. And so when you look at larger-scale projects, they could actually come in and make a submittal and ask for something more than two years right upfront. So say they want to develop 100 acres of land, or it's a mixed-use development, and you've got a lot of things going on in it. They might say, hey, could I get three years for this site-specific vesting plan? And council may listen to that and say, that makes sense. Let's go three years on this plan. So you have a little bit of a, you've got some flexibility in situations like that.
Good question. For the may not regulate the appearance of single-family dwellings, except in the historic district, that seems to imply that we may regulate the appearance of multifamily dwellings, parking garages, hotels.
Yes.
Is that what we mean to say?
If it's not subject to the one and two family code, currently, you can have design regulations.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
So townhomes, if they're not greater than, or three stories or higher, or I think, is it five, five in a row or more? Somewhere like.
Somewhere right around there.
So townhomes that are under those are subject to the one and two family, so we may not be able to regulate. But apartments, any other type of non-residential buildings or structures, which we hope we're going to have something, you know, come out of our small area plans, that we can have a ready-made type form-based code where we'll be able to regulate that design and orientation of those buildings.
The one other exception I would mention where you could also regulate, say someone submits for conditional zoning, and they're actually willing to say, yes, this is the design criteria we're going to meet, then you can capture that in conditional zoning and you can regulate it at that point. And the only other thing I would mention, I started to put in a slide because we have been through crossover at the legislative level, so there are some bills that are being monitored very closely right now that have a potential to have significant impact on local government regulations. And one of those issues will be the single family. If you have water and sewer available, anything up to a quadruplex could be treated as a single-family residence and would have to be allowed. So these are very significant kind of what I would call intrusions into local government zoning decisions, so we're all watching it carefully.
Question about timing. So early on, you said, you know, basically 160D is effective, I guess, July 1, regardless of what the PDO says. So in terms of, say, somebody submits something and our schedule for having this approved for the village, is there going to be a period where somebody could submit, but they wouldn't, they'd be subject more to 160D because the PDO hasn't officially been updated yet? Or how quickly is this going to be implemented, do you think?
So I think there's a couple things there. One, no matter what, July 1, whether we've done anything on our end or not, which we won't be, because we're not in a public hearing before you guys and council's public hearing schedule won't allow for that either. At that moment, 160D will apply, but you're kind of hinting a little bit more to about, like, permit choice. So like, if any point, like, if we change anything else in our PDO, whether it be relative to 160D updates or not, if you have a completed application accepted by the local jurisdiction and the regulations change, then you can invoke permit choice, and then you can basically pick which regulations apply. But that doesn't work for statutes unless I'm interpreting something differently, Kathy.
Right, no, it would be specifically for something like that. A good example, say we come back and do tree buffers. You know, and somebody submits in the middle of that process, and they would get, they would have the opportunity for permit choice, even though we don't have it defined in the PDO at this time.
I'd imagine that's included with our 160D update, so.
Yes, it is.
What about these development agreements? We have one of those with the resort as part of our conditions last month.
Recommended condition.
Recommended, but since the council hasn't agreed on it yet, would it follow the guidelines in the 160D or, because I?
Yes, mm-hmm.
It's the same.
But the good part about that, it appears to be running at the same pace, is it not, Darren? Oh, it's not? Okay, separate public hearing then.
We have to agree to all the terms, and we're not in agreement to all the terms, so we can't have the development agreement. So we have to have the conditions first, then we'll back into the development.
There's other items to be negotiated.
Okay, so that kind of covers, I think, the 160D, unless somebody has another question. I can talk a little bit now about permit choice.
So you're going to send us a copy of what you passed around?
There's a little cleaner version, yes. I'll be able to get you guys. What I'm going to do is I'm going to send you a link. That was one that I was making a lot of notes on as we're going through, and what needs immediate attention and what doesn't. And I'm trying to think of when that, when I even did that. But I'll also be able to send a link, the School of Government, of course, our main resource for everything that helps us so greatly. They have a microsite for 160D and 160D only. There's even modules on there. There's even modules on there that, that you guys could, could view, but it's really, it was more for staff. Also, as Kathy had mentioned and I had mentioned previously with you guys, it, we don't have a, it's not a large impact for us in what we're doing. We've been doing a lot of this already. It just explicitly gives us the authority now that we can do a lot of things that we were doing. So we were doing it right all along. Also, you guys may remember, I, I prepared, or first quarter of 2020, I prepared a little brief slideshow of 160D and what it does and what you guys will see coming your way. And some of you, like I believe maybe Matt, David, and Jack, who came on after I had prepared that, also gave you guys a copy of, of that and went through some of those. But we, there is a pretty easy checklist that 160, that, that the School of Government prepared for. It's, again, it's a lot for staff. You can imagine there's a lot of offices where there's one staff person who may be like a town finance manager, planning and zoning administrator. They wear several hats. So they, they have a, they had a very overwhelming task. They segment the checklist and things that you must do, things that you may do, and then things that you can't do. So yeah, I'll, I'll prepare that, I'll send the link out. And then what we'll really do is we'll start citing specific areas with the, what we're proposing to be removed, modified, or added with the PDO. And again, as Kathy said, the bulk of that's going to be within the definitions, the things that we may want more discussion about are like public hearings, processes. And the biggest change and one that I wanted to focus a lot on, as Kathy and I have been talking a lot about past months, were the vested rights. Because now it's, it's, it's very specific in the statutes now. And we had been, hadn't been exercised in, in recent times as much, but we had a vested rights certificate when you're going through and doing some type of proposal where you could petition the council for something greater than the two-year timeframe, which we want to just make sure that we're clean for that. So that's, those areas are what we, we really want to get some broader discussion and some feedback from the board. But like, for instance, the definitions, they are what they are. But there's not much we can, we can do with those.
I think we're ready. Thank you. Anybody else have any more questions on this? Okay.
And, and as things pop in, in your guys' mind, and we'll forward stuff to you. If you want to meet with myself, give me a call or shoot an email if you have any questions. You know, we're, we're glad to. We'll, we'll be able to work through any other questions you may have because it's, it, it is very comprehensive and we understand that.
So now we're down to electronic permitting. In a sense, what we've done with this particular text amendment is just to codify things that are already happening. So the village is obviously already set up to receive applications electronically. There's a lot of electronic communication that already takes place. And so what we have essentially done throughout these revisions that you have in front of you, we've gone through and just codified that it's okay to have electronic submittal requirements. And Cindy, I can't remember if they were your comments, they might well have been. But I know we were asked for some consistency, make sure we use the same terminology throughout. And so we went back and made, made those changes to use the village's online permit center. And we tried to make sure that we had those standards very consistent. And so we decided with the appendices to take them more to a checklist, which would allow people to just pull this section down and then they can check off the things that they're doing. And it makes it easy for our permit texts to kind of hand out those sections. So this becomes more of a working document as well and not just a, not just a code book. So you'll see that we've gone through and we've changed and kind of consolidated what types of submittals we need for the single-family site plans. And we went back through and reformatted as well for the general concept plan. The one point I guess I would make at this point is that we have received some comments from the Historic Preservation Commission, that they have some concerns that they've not been able to view larger-scale prints. So they really like to see large maps. And so I guess that might be one thing that we might want to think about a little bit. There may be times when drawings are complicated and that you lose the fine detail if you're looking at something at letter size or tabloid-sized paper. But the, the other thing I will say is that the village can reproduce it, those larger scales as well. So that's the good part of it. So that could fall to the applicant or that could fall to the village. And it may be one of those things that we may want staff to be able to flag when something more detailed is needed.
I would second that, being on an HPC, that you, when you do an architectural review, usually it's the fine details of the drawings and the, and the renderings of the building that make the difference.
You can't read the height or the pitch of the roof and you're not there.
No.
That is so true. So that's one thing I think we do have to think about when we're reproducing materials. But the good part of getting things electronically is once we get them in, we can reproduce them at any scale. So that part's good. So with that, I mean, we could go paragraph by paragraph, but pretty much all of this is consistent. The last, the last page is a summary list of the sections that have changed. And something like this will be very useful as we're doing our 160D updates as well. We can put them all on a page, you know, list the sections. So I think that will also help you out with 160D. So unless you have any questions, that's really all I have on this.
How long has the village been doing the, it's been about a year, right? That permits are being done electronically?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Cindy. I didn't have my microphone on me. We did a soft opening on July 1st, 2019. It was, it was commemorative, I mean, I'm sorry to commemorate. Darren's, Darren's coming on board, which is two years today.
Congratulations.
Segue for me, Paul. Thank you.
How many people are doing it online? Is it a high percentage or?
It's increasing. I think last I looked, it was some people still. Some people, I think we're still getting faxes, aren't we, from some people? And not too many. But it, it's increasing. I, I think last I looked is close to 60%. Some of the home builders now are bracing it, which we like to see. We know that, you know, there's always going to be the one-off, that somebody comes in and they just don't know how to do it. We'll get that and we'll still respond and help those people out.
There been enough feedback to incorporate some of the, you know, business practices into this? Enough feedback from the users to incorporate?
And, and I think you've seen that. Some of it's also with our required fields that, that we require on our, on our own forms, which were then used to, to be implemented in, into the online system as, as a customer or the user themselves. And, and that does continually evolve as we're, as, as we've had it open for, for this amount of time now, we've started to find cracks where there are cracks. So we, we, I mean, we have a, you know, Kevin's our IT guy that we bombard with, hey, this isn't working, or, you know, we had a customer having this problem. So it is, we're going to always evolve with that. Thanks.
It's on board. Every time we do get-
Texts we can handle in-house. So once we, once we get some type of complaint, and it's not usually some type of complaint, it's a lot of times it's our permit texts are working with it and they're working with the, working with, with the permities. And those two will find out that there might be an issue. Soon as we find out that there's an issue, we go straight to Kevin and Kevin can generally make the, the, fine-tune the, fine-tune the system.
I have two questions. One, on the required documents. Has it always been the case that all other agency permits and approvals, and you have a list here, DEQ, DOT, et cetera, that those are required prior to approval? Or has it ever been like simultaneous? Is that, is that a change?
It, it's not necessarily a, a change. The, I think the other agency permits and approvals as required, I think that is new language. It has always been stated in there that there are other, other agencies that you would need approval for, but not necessarily a prerequisite for obtaining your approval from the village.
I guess you, you can get into a loop there, right? Where we've got approval from the state, but then comments from, from the village and then go back, you know, depending on the nature, go back to the state. I mean, somebody has to be first and somebody has to be second, so.
And, and one agency may necessitate a change based on their comments that changes something-
Right. Right. I mean, I know this, it's common in other municipalities, so I just, I didn't, I, I think this, thought this might have been an update.
I think with the single-family as well, since a lot of times when you're getting applications for single-family, they're ready to go, you pretty much do need to get any other approvals that might be required for them. So if you, yeah, it's, I mean, it's not often, but occasionally that will pop up.
And typically, a lot of times what we do is, because we do allow for the simultaneous processing of other permits, so we can take the application in and if, if one of, say, you know, a septic permit hasn't been issued, you know, we make sure we comment on that and we'll hold it a lot of times, yes, until they do-
Sure.
-give us that. And then once we have that approval, then we can move forward with issuing of the permit.
Yeah, I guess-
That's just one example, obviously. The driveway permits, you know, if they're a village street or they're a DOT street, we do wait until we get approval for that before they, they've held. Fish and Wildlife approval, you know, that's a big one here in the Village of Pinehurst. We do wait till you get the RCW letter before we issue the permit.
That's what, you know, the other part of that is we also say, if applicable and as required. So, and we make that turn-
Covers a lot. Okay, yeah, commercials seems like it, you know, in larger site developments, but we'll be where that would, you know, as long as there's some ability to adjust if, if the state is wrong or something, so you don't get stuck. Is there, and I, I haven't looked, but online, is there an easy mechanism for resubmissions?
So right now, what the, the applicant can do, if, if they submitted themselves using our online permit center and it gets routed to staff or, you know, completeness check and then routed to whoever needs to review it, and comments reissued say revisions are required, then there's a notification that's, that's given to the applicant. They can then upload those revisions midnight, 1:00 AM, sometimes later. So they do have that opportunity. We're kind of trying to work through without some staff getting blasted with email notifications that someone's uploaded something. Right now, it's just two, two staff get that notification. I'm not one of them, so I'm okay with that at this point. So yeah, it, it's pretty easy. It, it would be, I, I personally like, because a lot of what I am reviewing does have one and two subsequent reviews, to, to have it a little bit clear for, for all of us when the documents are in there and uploaded, you know, and it's up, it's uploaded and how they, whatever, whatever file name they include it with. So sometimes we have to go in and change it because any, any of our users, like for example, the Technical Review Committee that are internal have access to that. They need to be able to know what documents being referenced. So we're all talking about the same document. And then if we have outside agencies that need those documents, then we need to make sure, again, we got to send those out to them. But right now, for, I'd say from applicant standpoint, it's easy. They can upload it anytime they want to and, hey, Alex, I just uploaded this, you know, let me know if you have any questions.
Yeah, okay. And they, they don't have to do it like a, a new submission. They can somehow select that it's a part of a previous submission.
Correct. So once you create your record and you make your submittal, then you get a, you're assigned a record number, like PLN 2021 dash, too many, there's too many characters. I mean, like for, for our COAs, our COA 2021 dash zero zero seven seven. So you're assigned that and you'll get notifications and you can log in at any time when you're on your guest profile and see if we've commented, if, if there's been any other changes in the workflow. You can see the status update history. But once you get that, then you can just go into your record and then upload them.
Yeah, one thing, and I don't know if you guys have naming conventions, but if you require or ask people to name files in a certain format, DOT actually does that and for all the things they don't do well, that's, they do that well. They do a lot well. Is this recorded? But, but depending on the type of document, they have kind of a quick cheat sheet for this type of document. I mean, they all kind of have, the date goes here, but then there's even a place where you put, I mean, it's simple, but you put the digit. So if this is my second submission of the permit application or my second submission of this document, then, then that's in there. So if anybody's looking at it, they can easily tell. And you don't have to rely on the upload date as the, as the version because they had to put the date in the, in the name.
You and the fine folks with the North Carolina Department of Transportation have given me a good idea.
Democratic. That's all I have. Thanks.
Are there any questions on payment? I mean, do we accept electronic payment too? Is this sort of tied into it?
Same payment applies.
I have one, looking at the, the list, I see topographic surveys on the site plans. Is that new?
For single-family?
Yeah.
It, it's been there. It's been there. Again, and, and what, I think, I think Kathy undersold how much better of an organization that these now checklists with our appendices have because there would be like a paragraph for one item that would actually have like four or five things that you need to put on there. So it, a lot of times the topographic survey part would get lost.
Yeah, it was kind of buried way in there, yeah.
We, we began really enforcing that about 16 months ago.
Are there any issues with electronic signatures or whenever you need, do you have any documents that need notarization and how do you handle that?
Yeah, we, there, there are certain, certain forms that do need to be notarized and the affidavit for workers' compensation. I think they're just getting, they're getting, the applicant provides us that and they're getting scanned and uploaded. For, for some of, on our end, for some of our approvals, like for site plan approvals, we began doing electronic signatures for, for staff and it's been pretty well received.
May I ask you one question on the, on the site plan requirements for, and that is lighting? Do we require a lighting plan?
For our non-residential development, yes.
And I was searching for it because, you know, lighting's a big deal in the office and professional area.
It, it is. We, we do require that they be submitted and reviewed and approved by staff if there's exterior lighting proposed.
Right. Exterior, you know, landscape lighting and/or, you know, parking lights-
Correct, yes.
-so forth. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have one question. Under 9.17.1.1, on the last sentence that you added, it says, "and shall satisfy the electronic recordation, recordation requirements of the County of Moore." And so everything that was listed under there, are those considered those requirements or is, should there be a note as to where they need to go to find those requirements?
Kind of ends in a colon, which is odd.
Yeah, that, that's meant to be, you know, I'm, I'm guessing just the end of the sentence, but it, you know, it's for the Moore County Register of Deeds. They have recordation requirements. They're, they're not ours. And, and I would be hesitant to put what those requirements are in there. But I, I think it's, I mean, and-
But just to know where to go to find those requirements.
The office of the, we can put, like, was like Office of the Register of Deeds?
Okay, yeah.
Span on it.
Because County of Moore is kind of, could be anywhere. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I'd just add some, I mean, mainly clerical things, make things read a little, I guess, easier. In section 9.14.2, any electronic format to the village planner, just clarification on, is that also through the portal? Is that through email or just however to get to them? I also had a little question about that 9.17.1.1. Looking in the PDO how it is currently, that sentence about the materials being submitted, satisfying those requirements, I don't know if it makes sense somewhere else in there, but just the way it fits with the colon and then whatever's listed after that, just kind of, again, clunky. 9.17.1.6, just seemed like a lot in that paragraph. In the middle there, although it says, "the applicant shall file an application using the village's online permit center along with the associated fee," if you go down further, "with the village planner on a form prescribed by the village," how do they get that form? Where's that form? Is it also online? Then in the blue, just for consistency, it's for appendix A of the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, it just says sketch pl- Then in the blue, just for consistency, it's for Appendix A of the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, it just says Sketch Plan. I think what's referenced after that is just Plot/Sketch Plan, so adding Plot to that, again, just nitpicky. Submission, if you continue down under Appendix B, where it's referencing submission requirements for single-family development applications, that last sentence there, to help it read a little bit better, comma after needed, cross out, a structure being constructed, change to construction that is, and then, comma, thereby minimizing the cost. So, the sentence would read, "It is intended to be used when more precise information is needed to avoid construction that is out of compliance, thereby minimizing the cost of making the development compliant." Just again, to help it read a little easier. Following that, the following document shall be submitted if applicable. Reading through, I just, at first glance, I had trouble determining what triggers applicability. I didn't know if just whatever you're choosing there, if it's kind of a checklist thing, that would trigger what's needed. But just a little more clarity there might be helpful. And then, looking through, I, I think this is just for me, just not knowing what the, I guess, what different maps are involved, but there's different scales referenced for different maps. I figure there had to be some intent there, I just wasn't sure what it was. But, yeah, looking in Appendix D, the first line there, "Map size shall be electronically formatted to be reproducible at 24 by 36 with a scale no less than 1 to 50, where 1 inch equals 50 feet." On the next page, the vicinity map, I assume that's just a larger, zoomed out map, that one's 1 to 500. And then, "All maps shall be drawn to scale, and the scale shall not be less than 1 by 200," so I guess they all fall in there. But that was just me being unfamiliar with those different scales, or what the, what the reasons there might be. I'm assuming it's just because they're a different kind of map, showing different things, but.
And part of it with the 24 by 36 inches, sometimes people will produce a map that, when you get ready to scale it up or scale it down, it doesn't go very well, so we wanted to make sure that when it comes over, we can see it.
I figured that was the case, but again, just wasn't sure.
Do you mind giving Alex, or? You've already asked.
I was going to, yeah. If, if you're, you can, you can keep your copy if you want, if you're okay with handing it over, we'll take it, we can scan it and send it back.
It's yours.
All very helpful, thank you. Jack, I'm sorry. We, we don't. Got a suggestion?
Microphone. Your micro, you're getting waved at.
Wait, will I start over?
Oh, no. She's saying.
I was just asking about type fonts, two type fonts, and do we have any requirements on type fonts?
We don't.
Okay.
Which two, that you were saying, don't reproduce very well?
Depend, it depends on the document type that you're sending, yeah, and some of them can be printed, others can't be, depending upon the software that you have. You apparently have enough experience with this that you're pretty comfortable going forward. I mean, you've been doing it for two years.
I haven't run into any issues.
I mean, you've been doing it for two years, so it's not a big problem.
Haven't run into any issues that, that we've seen.
So, do we have any other comments, questions? Alex, Darren, Linda, do you have any more, or Kathy, you have any more? Are we done with this portion?
I think so, so, we, staff's got some feedback, we, we'll get to work on it a little bit. We'll provide you some more information for 160D, so whenever you have something ready to send to us, you can, you know, if you would, send it to, I guess for now, send it to Darren and myself. And we'll work on compiling the list, and, and trying to consolidate the comments and feedback we've gotten on 160D. If we need to, we could have another meeting to discuss, maybe prior to going to a public hearing, if, if that's the, the will. If not, if we're ready, if you guys trust us to just, you know, work on a little bit, and bring another draft, and hold a public hearing, get to public comment. If we need to work a little bit more after that, then we certainly can.
Does anyone have a problem with us going to a public hearing with the next version? Anyone?
From what I understand, some of the choices are already taken away from you, right? So, I mean, it's, it starts becoming very, you know, objective, so, I mean, let's all push on with it.
Okay.
Want to have, I guess we can, I don't want to take the floor from you, Cindy, but we have, you know, the last item, next to last item for business is next meeting date, and I'm looking at the agenda, and that doesn't look like the right date.
It isn't, July 1st is our next meeting date.
Not last year. Darren, did you do that?
So, July 1st, whoa, July 1st, 2021 is our next meeting. And it's, can, does anyone have a problem with that date because of the 4th of July holiday, since we do have the USGA likely to be here?
I will be away.
Okay, Julia will not be here, anyone else?
Will we have the USGA?
It's possible.
Yeah, it's, it's, last, only next one that, that's, that's possible at this point. We're, we, we've been reviewing that application and plan. I can't, I can't think for how long we issued some comments on them, so we're, we understand that they're working to address the comments, and we gave a deadline to hear back before, we, we can meet the notice requirements. We'll know more in two weeks.
Okay, just wondered if we were gonna have a forum.
Could, it could be a lengthy, lengthy meeting, but, yeah, if we can get our, at least five folks to attend, I guess, and, you know, we don't want anyone to miss one that may be important to you.
What are we gonna see on the 160D text changes? You're gonna give us an entirely new PDO and just highlight those areas that changed?
We're just gonna give you the sections.
Sections that are changed?
Yes.
The red and the, and the red line, so forth?
Typical format you're used to, strike through, underline.
Is it gonna be huge? I mean, I'm trying to understand how complex it's gonna be. Yeah, right.
I mean, I think it would be helpful to have an electronic version sitting out there, so if you're looking at it, and you're like, well, this, I need to see a little bit more to understand the context, then you could maybe bounce into the electronic version. That, that could be the whole document. So, you would have the section that's the print, that could be like the printed one that you're reviewing, but say it just raises another question, then you could flip to the electronic one, or open up a copy of the PDO.
This was a really good outline you gave on the, you know, on what items are important and so forth. You could almost relate it to that.
If you, if you guys would rather have an outline, we, we, maybe a more descriptive outline, we can, we can provide you with that. And, and maybe tell you guys where to go in the PDO. Just, you know, reference the section, this, this is applicable section four. The definitions are gonna be Chapter 10, I think we all may not worry about that, but where vested rights, where public hearings, where items like that are concerned.
Then you'd have an electronic copy that we could go to and, and read about it, is that, you have an outline of the areas? Is that what you're saying?
Kind of like, the, the outline could be your key, and then you can have the document to go to, to look at. If it's a, if it's subject matter that's, that you care to get into, and wanna look and see, and see how it relates with the document, then, then go for it. If, if you don't care, and you'd care to skip over that section, then you can go to another section.
I'm comfortable you're gonna do all the right wording. The question is, can we identify those substantive changes that are changing a process, or changing the format of, of meetings, or something to that effect? In other words, just because the word changes, doesn't mean, you know, it really made, makes a lot of, a huge difference. It's those that are really gonna affect us, or other organizations, or yourself, that we, that are kind of the most interesting. Type of meeting, yeah, absolutely.
Hearings and meetings.
Those are probably the more substantial, and I, and I got some looks, you know, when, when we were talking about that, and there's a lot of recent experience that you, that this board has with that as well, as Village Council. You know, major subdivisions, major site plans. There may only be two of you that have experience at present with major site plans. The Village Pinehurst Community Center, the Pinehurst Elementary Temporary School Site, for example. Those were, both of those are where you apply objective standards, so even though you have a, a public hearing, I was not picking on you two ladies. It's, you know, there's a standard, and if the applicant meets it, even though you invite the whole neighborhood to come in, and it would may, make you think that they want to hear my opinion on, I'm gonna use this as an example, drainage. If it doesn't apply to the proposal before you, then you, you're bound to, to, to give them that approval. So, those are the ones, those are the big ones.
Yeah.
It's those two that we require a public hearing for, but.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in any changes that either trumping or invalidating, you know, sections of our current PDO, you know, to have that highlighted, I mean.
And what we can do, we can kind of bring back some optional language on that topic, per se, because right now, I've left it out, because I feel like it's something that the board needs to discuss, and you might not even want to tackle it in this amendment. You don't have to tackle it in this amendment, but.
Here, you're right, you were, you were saying, maybe we should develop the wording from different options?
Right, you would have some different options that you could pursue.
There's really only, there's really only two. You know, as, as far as, as far as if you want to hold a public hearing.
Oh, well, and.
And it might, and it might be, this might be more prudent to get feedback, have, have a discussion on high about that first, before we really jump too far into that.
Right, I mean, with the, with the adjustments we've made so far, we tried to stick with things that we know that, one, they had to be changed, or it really could be helpful, like putting the development agreement language in there, that type of thing. This, this involves some decision-making about what is the right process for the village. And so, because it's not a mandated thing, you have the option, you can make it a public hearing if you want to. We're just saying you don't have to, so that's why taking that separately, and addressing that separately from these revisions, might be the best way to go. That way, we don't rush in and change a process that people don't want to see changed.
And you make that decision on each individual project, or does it have to be like statute for all of one type?
You can put a, you could, you can put a criteria on there, if it's greater than XYZ amount of square footage, this amount of, well, yeah, I mean, for example, our, our major versus minor site plan is two acres. Two acres is your threshold for subdivisions, you know, anything that's over, if you're creating more than three lots, or you're offering a, involves new street construction, it's a major subdivision. Anything under that, staff via the village manager signs a plat and approves. So, you know, there's criteria like that, the thresholds that we could consider. 10 lots, 20 lots for subdivisions, you know, two acres, four acres, five acres, you know, just for example. A lot of times, a lot of communities, Kathy may have more experience with this, is that, you know, they'll require a, a special use permit be obtained if, if the proposal, you know, is a, I don't know, certain thousand-square-foot building and disturbs acreage of XYZ amount, you know.
And then you have special use permits, then you go quasi judicial.
Have to develop standards.
And that gets tricky fast.
It could, yeah.
But it at least gives you some flexibility to drill down in and affect the outcome that you wouldn't have otherwise. And sometimes it's good.
You have the ability to apply standards that aren't just the objective standards that you're, you're having these hearings for, that you can't really do much about anyway. But there again, that's typically at the, at the, you know, at, at the will of the governing board to, to, to make that decision, so maybe we need a little more feedback.
Well, and I think some of the discussion that we've had, process itself sets up a perception with the public on the public hearing, per se, an administrative review. Public can show up and really affect change when they can't really affect. I think that's what the genesis of some of the, the discussions that we were having on the, on the whole, should we change what is required public hearing? We're always gonna have the meeting, we're always gonna have a public meeting, there'll be a notification. It'll just, it, it won't be potentially in the context of a public hearing.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing what we get from you. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
And Alex and Darren, so we've covered that our next regular meeting is on Thursday, July 1st, 2021. And Julia won't be here, but everybody else should be able to. So, then, is there any other business? If not, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
We can stay here all night if you want to, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jules, we have a motion by Sonia, and a second by Jules, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, meeting is adjourned, see you in July. Thank you, everybody.